The time is 5:31 PM. I would like to call our work session to order. Mr. Parker, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Daniels? Ms. Davis?
Present.
Ms. Green?
Present.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Ms. Rawls?
Present.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Present.
Ms. Bowers?
Present, thank you. We have quite a full agenda this evening, so I'll just get started with the work of the Administration Committee. We have two bills and three resolutions for discussion. We will begin with Bill One of 2025. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Yes. Bill One of 2025. An ordinance amending Chapter Two dash five one five. Citizens Law Enforcement Advisory Committee of Title Two Administrative Code to grant City Council exclusive appointment authority over the Citizens Law Enforcement Advisory Committee.
Thank you. Before we open up the floor to any questions my colleagues may have, I just wanted to refresh everyone's memory a little bit about the Citizens Law Enforcement Advisory Committee. So the Council of the City of Harrisburg recognizes that the mission of the Harrisburg Bureau of Police is to protect and serve the public with honor, integrity, and professionalism. The Council acknowledges the importance of public accountability of the Harrisburg Bureau of Police as well as law enforcement throughout our nation to ensure that the constitutional rights and freedoms of all people are upheld. The Council further recognizes that fostering a strong and collective relationship between law enforcement and the community is essential in building trust, enhancing public safety, and ensuring effective policing. The Council recognizes there is a significant community interest in strengthening the relationship between the Harrisburg Bureau of Police and the residents they serve and ensuring that the Bureau remains accountable to the people of Harrisburg. The Council finds that providing opportunities for ongoing dialogue, oversight, and collaboration between the community and law enforcement will help build public confidence in the Bureau and support the goal of a safer, more unified city. To further these objectives, the Council established the Citizens Law Enforcement Advisory Committee through Bill Eight of 2020 as an advisory body composed of city residents dedicated to promoting transparency, accountability, and trust between the community and law enforcement. The Council, in its ongoing efforts to provide clear and consistent leadership in governmental appointments, has expressed a preference for the Council to have sole authority over such appointments to ensure alignment with its broader public safety and governance priorities. In light of this policy approach, the Council has determined that the appointment authority for the Citizens Law Enforcement Advisory Committee should reside exclusively with the Council, which was previously shared between the mayor and the Council. So just to note, Chapter... We're amending the Administrative Code. Part Five of Title Two of the Codified Ordinances for the City of Harrisburg is amended to read Part Five, Two dash five hundred, entitled Boards, Committees, Authorities. Chapter Two dash five one five, entitled Citizens Law Enforcement Advisory Committee, subsection Two dash five one five point seven, is entitled Original Committee Appointments. Subsection A, the original committee shall be comprised of seven members appointed by the City Council, each of whom must be confirmed by a majority vote of the Council prior to being seated on the committee. So if you remember previously, the original committee was comprised of five members appointed by City Council and two members were appointed by the mayor. So this amendment would provide Council the opportunity to make seven appointments versus five. If you also recall during previous conversations regarding the Citizens Law Enforcement Advisory Committee, we have been waiting for the final two appointments. So if you remember, all seven policing districts within the City of Harrisburg must be represented on this particular board. And we had two outstanding appointees, which were formerly of the mayor. I don't have any questions. I think that this amendment offers Council the opportunity to make the board complete as well as it allows the board to begin its work. It could not start or have any action occur without all seven appointees. So I don't have any questions. I am in support of Bill One of 2025. I will now open the floor to my colleagues who may have additional questions or comments. I will defer to our Public Safety Committee Chair, Councilman Jones.
Thank you, President Bowers. Yeah, I concur with you. I believe that this has been taking some time for this to happen. And I believe this is another, yet another opportunity for our residents to repair or even build a relationship with the police department. So, and then, you know, so they can really get an in-depth idea of what's happening and what the residents are seeing. So, you know, I too am in support and I hope that, you know, our colleagues are too. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Rodriguez, you served as our former Public Safety Committee Chair. Do you have any questions or comments related to Bill One of 2025?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I just echo the sentiments of my colleagues to the fact of we need to stop any attempt of a tyrannical association, whether it's government, municipality, non-associated entity. If there isn't a mechanism of accountability for any authority, I think it stops and prevents them from wanting to act out of, you know, the proper procedures and protocols. I myself had an incident just in December where I was illegally pulled over. And I feel as though that mechanism needs to be there for accountability. Plus, if we ask our residents to serve on boards and they stand up to the test to fight and help City Council and help the city move forward, and then we say, oh, I'm sorry, we were just playing. They showed up for the meetings, they showed up for the appointments, and then we just kind of leave them out in the open. I think we owe them a due diligence to fight harder. And it's been going on since 2020. I just feel as though we're doing the right thing by at least trying to move this forward. It's not that we don't want to work with the administration and making it happen. It's just we feel as though maybe this is one thing we could take off of the plate of the administration and assist with even further. So I don't want it to be looked at as like a tug-of-war type of ordeal. We just feel as though we had great people appointed. The board was nearly finished and to wait numerous years just for one or two appointments, I think is just a bit ludicrous at this point. And hopefully we can move this forward and get this board appointed and have an accountability measurement for the residents if or when any officers or our law gets a little bit hell-bent and out of shape. That's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rawls, any questions or comments?
Thank you, President Bowers, and good evening, everybody. I don't have any questions. I'm in support of this. I remember Councilman Rodriguez working diligently on interviews, on contacting members to be on the CLIAC board. So I know he put a lot of hard work in it on this project and it's time to move it forward. And also, I believe Vice President Asha Green also took part in when it first started up and she was part of public safety. So this has been a long-going process. And I agree with Councilman Rodriguez, it's not a tug-of-war. It's only, hey, you know, let's get this started. The residents are looking forward to it. We, they've already been picked, it's time for them to serve, they're ready, and the community's ready so we can continue to build the bridge between the police department and the residents and accountability, and this is a great step forward. So I'm in full support of it.
Thank you. Vice President Green, another former Public Safety Committee Chair who was instrumental in the development of Bill Eight of 2020. Do you have any questions or comments?
No questions, just comments. I agree with everyone else. The time has come, it's been come. You know, it's the reason why this came to fruition to begin with. Even before I led the charge for Bill Eight, there was an effort to get this done years before when Councilman Johnson and Councilman Majors led the charge originally, and it just wasn't able to come together. In 2020, we really made sure we got out there, spoke with the residents, held town halls. Even during the pandemic, we did it virtually, we did it at parks, just to make sure we could get people's input. We did all that, we got the input, we got it passed. And then for it still not to be actually up and running, it just doesn't serve the residents well. So I know that Council has made our appointments, I know the mayor may have had some issues finding people that lived in those districts to fill it. So maybe with our outreach and our resources, we can make those appointments to make sure things get done and we can continue to move forward. I know one of the parts of the CSA program was supposed to be able to work hand-in-hand with CLIAC. And the CSA program has went from a pilot to a full-blown program to director after director. And we still don't have this up and running yet. So I look forward to getting this done to make sure that the residents have that input and that ability because it was something that they really wanted and continue to want. So I just hope everyone can support this so we can move forward with it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Davis, any questions or comments?
Thank you, President Bowers. No questions for me.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Daniels, any questions or comments?
No questions.
Okay, thank you. I did want to read the remainder of subsection Two dash five one five point seven. Subsection D reads that City Council shall make a request to city neighborhood groups for recommendations of qualified residents from their neighborhood for appointment to the committee. Subsection Two dash five one five point eight, entitled expiration of appointed terms and vacancies. Subsection B reads the chairperson shall notify the city clerk in writing no less than thirty days prior to the expiration of a member's term or within thirty days of any vacancy occurring on the committee. And subsection Two dash five one five point eight, subsection D, reads City Council shall accept the committee's recommendation or recommendations or otherwise appoint another eligible individual subject to a majority vote of City Council in accordance with the provisions of Chapter Two, section, or Chapter Two dash three oh one point three of the Administrative Code. Believe those are all the amended sections. So I just wanted to read those. But if there are no further questions or comments, I move to add...
I'm sorry, President Bowers.
Councilwoman Davis?
Yes, I was just going to ask, I guess there's no one here from the administration to speak on this.
This bill, well, the solicitor can speak to it, I guess, from the administration's perspective. But this bill was drafted at our request. If you would like commentary, I'm not sure if you have a question for this solicitor?
No, my only point was that it's a council request. So there is no, the administration doesn't present on a council request.
Thank you for clarifying. Okay. If there are no further questions or comments, anything else, Councilwoman Davis? Okay. I move to add Bill One of 2025 to our next legislative session agenda for a vote. Next, we have Bill Two of 2025. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Bill Two of 2025. An ordinance forgiving and discharging 2024 city real estate taxes, including interest, penalties, and costs, and striking off tax liens for certain historically tax-exempt properties.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the administration that will speak to Bill Two of 2025?
So this request actually originates out of the Law Bureau based on our meetings with the other taxing authorities. Dauphin County, I guess 2023, did a re-registration for the first time of every exempt property in the Dauphin County. A few of the churches, right now we know of three in the city, a bunch outside the city, never turned in their paperwork and then got a tax bill. Having never got a tax bill, they thought it was just a mistake and didn't pay the tax bill. And then finally realized they had to go in and deal with the board. The board was able to give them each an exemption, but they couldn't forgive, they don't have the ability to forgive the prior year's taxes. But it really was just a paperwork error. Those churches have all around, the three of them here, for a very long time. They haven't always been the same congregation, but they've always been a house of worship. And so they were traditionally exempt under Pennsylvania Constitution and under City Code. So this is just, this is a request to exonerate those past due taxes because neither the mayor or the treasurer can just give a blessing and wipe them out. So the school board, is my understanding, has voted on at least two of them and is agreeable to all three. I think the county has voted on all three, the commissioners. And so we're just basically in line with that. So that they're currently all exempt, they just have a year of taxes that is deemed past due. That, and I frankly don't know whether they paid them and appealed or haven't paid them and appealed. But it was just really from the administrative change in direction at the county this happened.
Thank you for clarifying. I don't have any other questions. If the school board and the Dauphin County Commissioners have taken action, guess we're next in line. So I don't have any other questions. I'll defer to my colleagues who may have some. I'll begin with our Budget and Finance Committee Chair, Vice President Green. Any questions?
No, I don't have any questions regarding this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Davis, any questions?
No questions, President Bowers. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Daniels, any questions?
Yeah, what's the value of that, of this ordinance?
What's the dollar amount being forgiven?
Yeah.
Actually, I don't know. I didn't look it up because they shouldn't have been taxed in the first place. But I can get you that information.
And have any properties that paid tax for 2024 that will have to be refunded?
So if they've paid taxes, authorized a refunding, I did not get into the weeds because it was simply agreed, it was an error across the board. And, you know, they have emailed, they have called many people, and have presented already to the school board and to the county Board of Appeals. And not surprising, mostly unlike other developer-type people, their appeals are all by volunteers helping them, trying to fix their problem. And so, but I can get you the details on each property, what the tax bill that went out was, what the assessed value is, and whether they were paid or not. But under Pennsylvania real estate law, if you have three years of non-real estate taxes, you go up for your tax sale. So, you know, they did their part and came in for their exemption, but exemption can't go back to the prior year, it goes when they apply. So it left one year open in question.
And are all three properties, do all three belong to the same entity? Or is it three separate owners?
Three separate congregations, nothing, as I know, to even do with each other. Totally different people contacted us on each of them.
Do we expect more of these requests? Or do you think the problem has been addressed systemically?
So we were just on a call with the county tax bureau representatives, the county's tax lawyers, and the Board of Assessment Appeals People. There are a handful around the county that still have not responded at all, you know, two years in. They just haven't filled out an exemption form, they haven't done anything. I forget if you set it down to thirty-six of them around the county, that there's still an open question. So they're being preceded with as if they are taxable at the moment. So there could be another that comes, but these are the ones that have been identified to date.
That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rawls, any questions?
No, I don't have any questions, but thank you, President Bowers.
Thank you. Councilman Rodriguez, any questions?
No, this is pretty standard in the nonprofit or churches type of world. So thank you for presenting. No questions.
Thank you. Councilman Jones, any questions?
No, my concerns were same as Councilwoman Daniels, so thank you.
Thank you. If there are no further questions or comments, I move to add Bill Two of 2025 to our next legislative session agenda for a vote. Next, we have Resolution Twelve of 2025. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Yes, Resolution Twelve of 2025. A resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services agreement with Conrad Siegel Incorporated to provide actuarial services to assist the city in negotiations of certain collective bargaining agreements.
Thank you. Who will be representing the administration for discussion of Resolution Twelve of 2025?
Somehow I suspect that's me.
Okay, Solicitor Grover.
So on December 31st, 2025, both the AFSMI contract and the FOP contract expire. In the course of making and evaluating proposals back and forth, we need an actuarial service to provide long-term analysis of those numbers. What are the legacy costs of a proposal in either direction? They will make analysis of both ones that are made and ones that are, as you're going through a list of potential things, to figure out which one makes the best sense. So they're not necessarily, they're pre-decisional deliberation type of things. You present a professional with a series of potential options and they give you how those numbers work. The, right now, they are under contract to give us OPEB analysis for pension only. But this is to give them a broader scope, it's not part of their current contract to do this others. And they have done it for us in the past in other contract periods.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any questions. No, I don't have any questions. The hourly rate is $325 per hour for the services. And...
And the services will essentially be how much we give them, right? Like if you have to look at twelve options, it's a whole lot more than six options, so.
Okay. I don't have any questions. I'll open the floor to my colleagues who may have additional questions. I will begin this time with Councilwoman Rawls. Any questions?
Thank you, President Bowers. No, this was pretty much straightforward, and I know this is a contract we've been engaging with with the last bargaining agreement, so I'm fine.
Thank you. Councilman Rodriguez?
Thank you, Madam President. Solicitor Grover, do you know how far back the relationship spans with the firm and the city?
I've been here since 2014 and they were here before I got here.
Okay.
So I don't know when it started.
Okay. I've just was gazing on their website and it seems like they handle themselves well. So I just wanted to see how far have they been taking care of our accounts? And is there a great standing relationship?
Yeah, they were here before receivership, through receivership, and since receivership.
Okay, awesome. No further questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Jones?
I will probably ask you some questions off-record. I'm dragging here, so... No questions right now.
Okay, thank you. Vice President Green, any questions?
No, I don't have any questions regarding this.
Thank you. Councilwoman Davis, any questions?
Thank you, President Bowers. This sounds pretty cut and dry to me. No questions. Thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Daniels, any questions?
No questions.
Okay, thank you. If there are no further questions or comments related to Resolution Twelve of 2025, I move to add it to our next legislative session agenda for a vote. Resolution Thirteen of 2025. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Yes. Resolution Thirteen of 2025. A resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a landowner-grantee agreement with the Dauphin County Conservation District in furtherance of the 2024 Countywide Action Plan Riparian Buffer Project.
Thank you.
I believe we have gentlemen from the Conservation District.
Wonderful, thank you. Yes, if you could please move that microphone very close to you. Press the bottom button to make sure that it's on and... Yes, it's on. Can you move it closer to you, though? If you, good evening, if you wouldn't mind introducing yourselves and then providing an overview of the resolution. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks a lot. Thank you so much for having us. My name is Eric Naguski. I'm the Department Head of the Dauphin County Conservation District. And this is my colleague here.
Good evening. I'm Josh Clark. I'm the Countywide Action Plan Program Manager with HRG. And HRG serves as the Countywide Action Plan Coordinator for Dauphin County.
Okay, great. What we have, what we brought, and thank you very much to Mr. Parker and Mr. Grover for getting us on the agenda. It's a big help. We've been, we're kind of up against a time constraint to have this grant funds, these grant funds spent. So again, thank you very much for having us. The property that we're referring to is 919 Gibson Boulevard. It's behind the Dauphin County Work Release Center. It's about a two-acre lawn at this point. Since the building, to my knowledge and what I have been told by the people who work at the Work Release Center, the county has been maintaining this property since the center was built in 1996. And basically, that just means mowing the grass and maybe moving some down trees if they fall. A couple of years ago, I was approached when this, the Countywide Action Plan funding came to the county and to the district and to the County Planning Commission. We were out looking for projects. I was contacted by the staff at the Work Release Center about maybe doing a lawn-to-meadow conversion on this property to really achieve two main goals. One is to, and probably the most important is to, at least in my world, is to improve water quality going to Spring Creek. The other motivation behind this is basically to save costs on the maintenance, the mowing of the property. And the CAP, I'm going to, the Countywide Action Plan, I refer to it as the CAP. The CAP funds are part of a DEP grant to the county to improve water quality, the overall goal of improving water quality to Saskatchewan River and then therefore Chesapeake Bay as part of the state's Chesapeake Bay watershed... Watershed plan, sorry. We're looking at about 1.4 acres of converted lawn to a meadow. And I'm going to let Josh talk a little bit more about the technical part of this as far as like what exactly that means, a meadow. And off the top of my head, I think that's about it. I don't want to take up too much of your time. So Josh, if you want to go over what the, sort of the nuts and bolts of the conversion, what that means?
Yeah, so the idea here would be to basically take the turf grass down as low as we can get it without really disturbing the soil. And then conceivably, we would be drilling the seeds into what would have been lawn so that it can grow back as native plant species, which would be great for water quality, for pollinators, that sort of thing. The way that this is set up, we have about a forty-foot mowed area that will be maintained as turf so that there's a line of sight through and down the hill here. And there will also be about fifteen feet the whole way around for the same purpose so that it's kind of delineated as an intentional meadow for the whole thing. As Eric mentioned, it does reduce maintenance over time. Ideally, this will be mowed once a year after this, after it's established so that woody plants don't come through. It will be maintained as a meadow over time and it will lead to reductions for water quality.
Okay, thank you very much.
Could I add something to what Josh said? The county has, the county at the Work Release Center, they have agreed to continue the maintenance, that annual mowing. So there would still be no, nothing really that would fall under the responsibility of the city as far as that goes.
Thank you. Okay, I don't have any questions. It seems like the confirmation letter, I assume this is, is pretty clear on the responsibilities in four main areas. on the responsibilities in four main areas. Cooperate with the project partners during the preliminary work needed to be completed. Allow project partners to perform site visits during project scoping. Review and approve proposed project design documents and allow the planting of trees and shrubs on my property, as you mentioned. Thank you. I don't have any questions. Thank you for your presentation. I will now open the floor to my colleagues who may have additional questions. This time, I'd like to begin with our Public Works Committee Chair, Councilwoman Rodriguez. Do you have any questions or comments related to Resolution Thirteen of two thousand and twenty-five?
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, gentlemen, for giving us that brief synopsis of the project. Now, when we speak about what you guys are talking about, it definitely plays within the county's comprehensive plan overall. Is there any assessments or any surveys needed, or will you guys be ready on go?
Yeah, we're ready to go as soon as we're allowed to go.
Awesome. Thank you. No further questions.
Thank you. Councilman Jones, any questions?
Thank you. Thank you, guys, for your brief presentation, you know. But I do just want to say that, can you guys do a little bit more? We need the best water quality that we could get right now. No, but I appreciate, you know, efforts, taking steps towards that. Think it's a great project, and I have no question, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ross, any questions?
No, I don't have any questions. I did see that it was a meadow. That was exciting, you know. It helps with the water quality, so I was excited to see that. I did want to see what it would look like. I know you brought some plans, and I didn't know how we could let the community members see that. So, those were like my two, like, comments slash questions, just so everyone could get a visual.
I can forward over the draft plans and get some concept photos included as well.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Vice President Green, any questions?
Thank you, President Bowers. Thank you all for being here tonight. I don't have any questions. I would like to see some pictures. When I think meadows, I think like frolicking through flowers, so. Yeah, like, like getting to know what it would look like a little better. Just helps from a personal perspective, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Davis, any questions?
Thank you, President Bowers, and Mister Duduski and Mister Clark. Thank you for your presentation. You mentioned the water quality. You specifically mentioned Spring Creek. I was just wondering why you specifically mentioned Spring Creek. I know there's a lot of other businesses in between and there.
So, the topography from the Work Release Center flows down to Spring Creek, so any of the overland flow that goes through that meadow will be cleaned before it gets to Spring Creek. The actual creek, yep.
Okay, because he's mentioned Spring Creek, so I didn't know. I'm thinking about the nursing homes, Spring Creek. Okay, so you're talking about, okay.
Creek.
Well, if you don't ask questions, you won't know, right? The only dumb question is the one you don't ask. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Councilwoman Daniels, any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Okay, thank you. If there are no further questions or comments, I move to add Resolution Thirteen of two thousand and twenty-five to our next legislative session agenda for a vote. Our final resolution for discussion within the Administration Committee is Resolution Fourteen of two thousand and twenty-five. Mister Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Yes, Resolution Fourteen of two thousand and twenty-five. A resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Susquehanna Township School District for the purpose of the continued use of a salt dome storage facility and the removal of solar panels.
Thank you. Solicitor Grover, are...
I suspect that's me again.
Are you present? Okay.
So, this property, at least related to the city, has a long history. It had belonged for decades to the Harrisburg School District. Harrisburg School District got approved and transferred the property to Susquehanna School District on January thirty-first of this year. For, I've lost track. For eight years, maybe, we've had a salt dome parked on these forty acres, plus the solar panels we had acquired are stored there. Under this agreement, it extends our time to be there formally by one year as long as we remove the solar panels off the property. I think by April thirtieth is under the contract. And then it's up for an extension for a second year as we relocate the salt dome. And I will note that the school district, our school district, shares salt with us, so we're not the only user of that particular facility. So, they've been in the process of relocating a salt dome, finding a location for it. Frankly, I've lost track how that's going. But Public Works has been at that for a while. You need a piece of land that's outside the floodplain to do that and certain features to be able to do it. But this agreement allows us to maintain that there without having to immediately relocate the property. How long it will take that property put into use otherwise, I have no idea where the Susquehanna School District is in the process.
Thank you. Just wanted to clarify on the removal of the solar panels. It notes the solar panels must be removed from the site within ninety days of closing or no later than April thirtieth of this year, which you noted. I just wanted to note the ninety days in the event something changes. The City of Harrisburg is authorized to negotiate and enter into an agreement with the Susquehanna Township School District to continue utilizing the salt dome storage area for a period of one year with a possible one-year extension, subject to the school district's approval, and to remove the solar panels from the property no later than April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five. I don't have any questions. Thank you for providing the background and history or reminding everyone. I will again defer to our Public Works Committee Chair, Councilwoman Rodriguez. Do you have any questions or comments related to Resolution Fourteen of two thousand and twenty-five?
Thank you, Madam President. Solicitor Grover, would these be the same panels that I believe we contracted Wildheart about two thousand and twenty to remove?
It is exactly the same. They were wrapped and moved there at that time and have not, as I noticed, that I know, have been utilized in any way. There's, I think, differing opinions on their usefulness as time has gone on. But the prevailing opinion is they're not very useful at this point, but that they have salvage value in terms of having them disposed of.
Would we be able to utilize our crew at Public Works or within the city to remove them? Or would we go with a similar MOU with an agency or a nonprofit?
No, it will be the city's crew. The reason we had to use another party last time was we were on a clock to get rid of them from the property had been sold, and the Commonwealth was about to put a building on that property. So, that was what brought us to have to get them out, and it was a lot of hands to disassemble them. But now they're just, now they're wrapped and stacked. And so, whether they go directly to disposal, I don't know, or whether they have a place they're going to locate them. But they were working on that last I talked to them. But they did believe there was value in...
The scrap.
A component of that, which was particularly more valuable than other parts of them.
Perhaps the copper or internal.
Right. And so, I had asked, lobbyist asked that they get us someone of qualified to render an opinion on usefulness of them, like why are these no longer of value? And this would come back if they're going to dispose them, they'd come back on a regular resolution to council for disposal of public property. So, but that was, they were working on through Public Works last I asked them to get us that information.
Yeah, I would imagine there's more high-efficiency, like, units nowadays, but they probably definitely have a use somehow, some way, even if it's scrapping and getting from the precious metals, retaining some of the value.
Right. I think, I think the theory is that having sat there, the internal parts are just not as valuable, and a new one is not much more expensive than this old one and has a longer lifespan.
But it's for cost-effectiveness. It's something we could definitely take care of in-house.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. No further questions.
Thank you. I'll now move to the other end. Councilwoman Daniels, any questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Davis, any questions?
No questions.
Okay. Vice President Green, any questions?
No questions. Just will note that the fee is one hundred thousand, or no, one hundred dollars. Excuse me. It's a hundred-dollar fee for one year, correct?
I guess so. I haven't paid attention until I should.
It says upon execution of the agreement and upon Susquehanna's proper invoicing of city, city shall pay Susquehanna a fee of one hundred dollars for entering into the agreement and for the first year license period to city.
I think the reality is those checks never get written when governments say it's a hundred dollars to each other. Right. It's like, it used to be, you used to say a dollar, now you say a hundred dollars.
Okay.
So.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Ross, any questions?
That was one of my questions. I did not see that when I was reading it. I'm sure I see it's like right there, but I was wondering how much it was, because I know we are going to be in charge of the liability for it. Do we pay the liability insurance?
So, because it is a liability, they don't want it. That's why they want it off their property. So, that was the agreement of us getting rid of it. So, it would be covered under our general liability of other property we have. I think it's just the Public Works just trying to make a determination whether it makes sense to have them for a while and take them apart or to be more dramatic in how they're removed. And they're looking for help to do that. So, and, but I think the city engineers on it, the traffic engineer people are on it, Public Works people are on it. And I'm waiting for an answer back.
Okay, sounds good. It's pretty straightforward other than that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Jones, any questions?
Yes. How much are these worth? Were they going to be, no, I'm messing with you. Those are the same questions I had. The questions were asked and answered, so thank you.
Thank you. If there are no further questions or comments related to Resolution Fourteen of two thousand and twenty-five, I move to add it to our next legislative session agenda for a vote. This concludes the business of the Administration Committee. Next, we have Budget and Finance Committee. I will defer to our Budget and Finance Committee Chair, Vice President Green, to lead discussion.
Thank you, President Bowers. Looks like we have one resolution in the Budget and Finance Committee, which is Resolution Eleven of two thousand and twenty-five. Resolution approving the second proposed two thousand and twenty-five budget reallocation, appropriation, and allocation of certain funds. And do we have anyone from the Administration to represent this?
So, these are actually both from the Legal Department.
All right.
As you know, in the annual budget settlement fund, it is depleted because we have entered or to or have negotiated without final signature four separate settlements that will deplete the fund, and we're looking to refurbish the fund. So, it's moving five hundred thousand dollars into the fund. You know, and some of those, we've talked about in the executive session of how we're resolving those.
All right. I felt we might have got to hear from somebody else tonight, but it's good to hear from you.
Maybe Michael just didn't call anybody. I don't know. I have no idea, so.
That's incorrect. I made sure that everyone was going to be here.
I don't really have any questions regarding this. I think the Solicitor covered it.
Did you want to talk about the second one at the same time, or did you want to take them all at that time?
I was going to do one at a time. Anyone have any questions regarding Schedule One? I will start to my far right here with Councilwoman Daniels.
No questions.
Thank you. Councilwoman Davis?
No questions.
Thank you, President Bowers.
I don't have any questions. I'll save my comment for the next one.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ross?
No, I don't have any questions. Thank you, though, Vice President Green.
Thank you. Councilman Rodriguez?
No questions for me. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilman Jones, any questions?
Yeah, I might as well. So, no, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We can move on to the second part of the schedule.
The second item is the initial seed money allocation. There is no allocation for the receivership petition we put in for Governor's Square. The city has filed, as you know, a petition in the county court, asked for an appointment of receiver. One of the conditions of receivership is that the court's order will provide for eventual reimbursement to the city of any funds put up. I think just for the cold, hard reality, this is an initial allocation as they get underway and evaluate the property. I can tell you the other step simultaneous with this is getting a stipulation of stakeholders in the process so that there's not a fight about the receivership itself. We did a similar thing that got us out of bankruptcy court over to the county court, and it would be essentially the same stakeholders, although they're not parties to the receivership. But they have interest financially in the property and in the debts of this. So, the receiver, we presented Midtown Properties as the requested receiver. They would open a separate LLC to avoid the liabilities of the current owner and manager, and they would be appointed to hire a qualified manager approved by HUD and the court. So, they would report to the court, not the city. And we're doing something, I think, fairly, it's a fairly big lift that we're undertaking, but there's no one else taking it. The threat has been, at different times, just for them to walk away and leave the tenants there. So, half of the properties are vacant or supposed to be vacant. The, I think, are twenty-three of the buildings are condemned. And so, the idea is to come up with a plan through someone who is disinterested, like a receiver, to assess both the accounts, the vouchers, the physical plan, and come up with a longer-term plan, how to do it. Ultimately, it probably has a sale, but frankly, that's going to be HUD, the receiver, the city, and the court coming up with that. But ultimately, right now, HUD has the approval of any purchaser. The receiver's original proposal in terms of the court is not to sell the property, but to assess and get a manager and come up with a plan to recover that property and put it back into service as a low- and moderate-income facility.
All right. I have a couple of questions, but I'll wait a little bit. I'm going to start to my far right here with Councilwoman Daniels. Do you have any questions or comments?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Davis, any questions or comments?
Thank you, Vice President Green. No questions at this time.
Thank you. President Bowers, questions or comments?
I don't have any questions related to Exhibit B. I would like to offer an amendment to the resolution as a whole, though. I would like to amend the document to add funding from the municipal host fee, fifty-nine thousand dollars as an allocation to the Harrisburg Youth Sports Association. I will have the language and representation from the Harrisburg Youth Sports Association during our legislative session. So, I would like to suspend the rules for further discussion then, but I did want to just note for the record that I will be offering an amendment to the resolution.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Ross?
Thank you, Vice President Green. I don't have questions. I think just the situation is disheartening for the residents. That's just a concern of mine. I mean, I don't know. I just wish there was more we could do, you know. So, I think that's just my biggest concern right now. But I would hope the receivership, since they don't have any ties either way, would be able to help with this, because there are residents living in real-time of disheartening conditions, so.
We would end up with a presentation for you from the receiver as well if the court approves them. But my understanding is they have about a thousand units now under management that are both commercial and residential and varied in their use. So, at least they have. They have twenty-five people in their employ. They are very on-the-ground, experienced people. Frankly, the city has gotten calls from all over, once we say we're going to do this, of people offering to say they'd be great at this, from Vegas, from New York, from Jersey. The mayor, the administration, I think the council, they want someone local who knows where to find a sink on a Saturday morning, you know, and who can install it and who can get it done for these people. And that's what, so we wanted someone local, on the ground, who knows the markets, knows where to buy things. And it just isn't going to be tied up in a lot of nonsense.
No, I agree. I think, I love out-of-town. Out-of-towners have nothing against anybody that's out of town, but we have so many issues already with just out-of-town landlords and property managers. And it's just really been tough on our residents. So, I'm going, please, somebody local. Please, for the sake of those residents and for our city, that this project is just, you know, way too huge to have anybody from out of town. But I'm sure you got inquiries from everywhere.
Everywhere.
So, yeah, but no, thank you. That's it.
Thank you very much. Councilman Rodriguez, excuse me.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I pretty much echo those sentiments. I think sometimes just find... sometimes just finding someone isn't good enough. We gotta make sure it's not only the right and qualified individual or entity, it's someone that has the heart and passion, because we could be looking at the same scenario ten years down the line. You know, if we're just talking about tax credits or a quick benefit or a quick exchange, you know, I just, as Councilwoman Ross said, um, Madam President has been up there, as have have I, and I've seen condemned homes, condemned homes with babies still living in them.
Yes.
I've seen, you know, where they're expected to still pay the rent, and there's the bricks aren't finished on the home. You know, it it's disheartening, even to the amenities. I've run into a few diabetic patients that have to put their medicine in a cooler. It's just not the way, you know, our residents should live. Um, so although it's a difficult situation, my heart goes out to those at Governor Square and um, just hope we could push past. And to the exhibit uh, Madam President has referred to for the amendment, I too support that amendment. Um, no further questions.
Thank you very much. Councilman Jones?
Yes, um, I I can say I echo that with everyone else said too, um, being that, um, you know, I will say this. Um, you know, early on, you know, the struggle that they were having up there, and I was trying to get those uh, places, those vacant places boarded up. I'm glad to see that they are now, uh, with one of the initiatives where I had the community come out. We cut the grass. They seem to been able to maintain that as well. Now, my question for the residents and viewers that are are watching, or maybe will check this out at some point, can you share what will happen to those individuals? Because I think that was part of the big thing that no one, you couldn't sell it, because someone would have to make sure that those residents were moved and taken care of until it was uh, back up to code and 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 being able to, you know, occupy that space again.
So I can speak in two ways to that.
Okay.
Um, first is is first, there's going to be a plan on how to restore what's there. Um, and that, I don't want to pre-guess the people that have the qualifications to put that plan together or the court's approval of it, right? It's gonna, they're gonna ask about funding, credentials, licensing, all those things. But under the Federal Uniform Relocation Act, if your facility is supported by federal funds and for a temporary basis or a permanent basis, you were going to relocate someone, and I think the important word here is temporary, that so you can go into that unit and repair it for them, there is a payment that has to be made to that tenant. Here, the one good thing about how bad this is, is that there are so many empty units that if they'll have places that are fixed, so they can go fix the ones people are in.
So it's nearly not putting anyone in a hotel at this point.
It does no, there's no, again, it's not going to be my plan, it's not going to be the council's plan, but there's been no talk of that. It seems there's enough facilities there just as they get them back up and occupiable and get an occupancy permit, that would be available to use for the people that are there temporarily as they get their unit back up. And probably they would have the option of staying in that new unit if they wanted to that, right? They'll they'll that that'll be, there'll be options then, but I don't want to second guess the management of this thing.
Right, right.
And I don't want to second guess HUD. I don't want to second guess the court.
Well, that that's not, that's not my aim here. It's just more so um, information for residents, because you know, we all have been figuring, trying to figure out what's going to happen with the people there. So um, if you're if you're just, a- again, that that sounds like something that may be feasible, but then I also will have question that, once we do get that information, will we be able to share that so we can report out to the community, or there will be something on the website for them to see?
So all of this is going to be public. It's going to be supervised by a court, right? Who has no interest in the outcome other than to make sure this place gets back up and running.
Right.
The condition of receivership, which under Pennsylvania law is temporary, is that it expires when the property becomes um, code compliant, right? So the objective is to bring it up to building code and health and safety code, and that would be the how that receivership expires.
And that's when somebody probably look to swoop in then, right?
I'm sure long before that. Lots of people want to buy it, but no one, but I'd say no one wants to pay for what they should pay. And and the city has taken a pretty hard line. There's been frankly, a lot of bottom feeders trying to get this, and seems like they would just let it go until it was no longer required to be kept affordable housing.
Right.
Right, and so we've been foot pushing back pushing back very hard that the city needs low and moderate income housing desperately, and we can't afford to lose this much property to the market.
What's that, two hundred and twenty?
Two hundred and twenty-two units.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So so the the last thing I would ask too, for not just for myself, but for the residents as well, those ones that are staying in, I want to say squatting, what is there, is there a plan for that?
That's beyond my thinking, right? That's why you need a property manager comes in and how to deal with it, right? And then you, and I don't want to get into the technicalities of squatting, whether there's property rights, tenancy rights.
I got you, I got you. You don't want to give out a All right, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, I do have a a couple of questions. First, I guess would be, what would be the process of finding the receiver? Like, what would be the process that the city would go through?
I've already found the receiver. The mayor's found the receiver. The first people that we've informally talked to, most of them just shook their head and said, no. Um, the people from property maintenance were uh, midtown property maintenance were very enthusiastic. They consider part of their community, part of their town. They would like the chance to make, help make this right. They were seemed very, very enthusiastic. Uh, they did accompany us to court uh, about it. Um, and again, they have, they've expanded to about a thousand units already managing, and they know the area. Um, and you know, and in the end, I think improving this location helps them with their locations, right? It just does, and it helps everybody. Um, and so uh, you know, the the, always the devil's going to be in the details, right? And uh, I don't know if a court will have its own unique uh, conditions it puts on it. That's going to be up to the court. Um, I don't know if HUD, if it exists by the end of the year, uh, it has its own conditions that they put onto it. Um, the, you know, the uh, but right now, their requirements are it's a checkbox of things you have to meet, and no one who had put in uh, that claimed that they were, that the owner's claim was a successful bidder, none of them, the last I talked to, had ever submitted the paperwork to HUD. They submitted a request to get the paperwork. They couldn't, they could not come up with a recovery plan, which is one of HUD's requirements. You had a full recovery plan for the entire property in order to be able to take it over, and that receiver will help put together, whether that becomes their plan or a potential owner's plan. You know, that's yet to be seen.
Okay. All right, uh, and then my other question was uh, funding source. It it shows here in the resolution, it says that um, where appropriated the amount of, okay. Whereas the program funds described in Resolution seventeen of two thousand and twenty-four is amended and reauthorized in Resolution five of two thousand and twenty-five is amended, were appropriated in the amount of eight million dollars for affordable housing, which shall be the source of funding. Is that the ARPA?
It's the original ARPA money that's now in the state grant program funding, so that is the uh, that is the source of the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Okay.
Um, I think everyone should be braced that it's going to be a lot more than that, right, as time goes on. Um, but with the condition that as they get the place to a positive cash flow and or sale, the city will then get its funding back into that state grant program.
Okay, so it's, we're looking to be able to recover the funding at some point. All right. Um, and I guess it was just confusing just because of the way it's written in the addendum that we were given. Uh, it's just written as grants to local units, and so I wanted to make sure it was clear that it was coming out of the ARPA fund, because in the resolution here, it seems pretty clear to me where it's coming from, but in the addendum we were given, it says grants to local units.
If you, if you look up at line three, it says state grants fund.
Okay. All right, thank you. That helps. Any other questions?
I just had a clarification. Um, Solicitor Grover, I'm not sure if you said it. I thought you did, but I think you said they already had found kind of a receiver, that the mayor did Midtown Property.
Midtown, Midtown Property Maintenance, Inc. But that but that corporation will open a separate LLC, which will formally be the one allowed to manage the receivership.
Oh, okay, I see. But they're still going through the process, like when, what are the next steps where we say, okay, they're definitely the receivers? Like, what's gonna?
The court says it, right? So so we have the petition in front of the court already. If we had our funding and we had our stipulation of the stakeholders, the judge would have signed it at the very first day we were there. But we need one, funding. Uh, we did not want to, if the council decided funding was inappropriate, there we'd have to withdraw the petition, right? And two, if if the stakeholders aren't in agreement of the terms, it ju- we're not here to litigate about receivership, you know? That we're just not going to spend taxpayers' money fighting on this private property uh, to make their lives better. They have, they've cost us an awful lot of time and money. Um, so we're just trying to get a a a stipulation, as we did in bankruptcy court, uh, that the judge can then review, if he's good with it, sign off, and then the receiver would be pointed instantly, and then they would have either, you know, a ninety or a hundred and eighty day window to come up with a recovery plan, to assess the property, to assess the accounts, which is important to us, to hire the property manager, because he's going to be the receiver. Um, and property management has to be approved by HUD under their conditions. It has to be a qualified HUD property manager. Um, and uh, and so there's a lot of steps, a lot of moving parts.
Yes, thank you for that breakdown. I was wondering what the process was now that we've, now that the mayor administration found someone they want to be the receiver, what were the next steps? Just so anybody who's listening and for us to know, this is what's happening right now. So, thank you.
There'll be public, other public meetings on it as we get moving.
I hope so, yeah. Thank you for that.
Sure.
That's it for me. Thank you, Vice President Green.
Thank you. Are there any other questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, I will recommend this move to our next legislative agenda, and that concludes the business of the Budget and Finance Committee.
Thank you, Vice President Green. The final committee business this evening lies with the Community and Economic Development Committee. I will defer to our Chair, uh, Councilwoman Daniels, to lead discussion.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Parker, could you read um, uh, Resolution thirteen hyphen two thousand and twenty-five to the right there, please?
Yes, Bill Three of two thousand and twenty-five. An ordinance amending the City of Harrisburg's official zoning map to change the parcel's zoning designation of six forty Allwigs- Allrick's Street to the industrial IND zone of the residential medium density RM zone pursuant to Chapter seven dash three zero three of the codified ordinances of the City of Harrisburg.
Thank you. Is there someone representing the city and who could give us a brief history of this resolution?
Uh, yes, uh, good evening, Council. Jeffrey Knight, Planning Director with the City.
Could you speak into the microphone? I can't hear you.
Yes, Jeffrey Knight, Planning Director with the City. Is that better?
It's a little better, but the the sound is muffled for some reason.
All right. Um, well, I'll try to make sure I speak up.
Oh, that's that's way better.
Uh, so the um, application before uh, the council tonight uh, is more of a corrective action um, than anything else. Uh, when the current zoning code and zoning map were developed between two thousand and eight and two thousand and ten, um, at the time, they had included uh, six forty-two and I believe, uh, or sorry, six forty and six forty-two, I believe, Allrick Street, um, which are on the north side of Allrick Street in the industrial zoning district. Uh, the property uh, behind them and the property just to the east were both in the industrial district. Their auto repair shops, they probably had, were like that uh, back when the map was developed, and it was probably more an issue of just grouping whole properties within a block uh, into a single zoning district. Um, so the owner of the property uh, came to uh, the city, um, actually, the Realtor for the owner uh, came to the city uh, and expressed that uh, having a zoning designation, which did permit uh, the um, a single family dwelling as a by right use uh, was either necessary for them to uh, sell the property or would uh, greatly assist uh, in the property uh, sale process. Um, and as noted, uh, a single family dwelling is not permitted by right in the industrial district. Um, so uh, the the property owner, uh, through their Realtor, did request uh, that this property be rezoned uh, to residential medium density, which does permit uh, by right, uh, single family um, dwelling. Uh, and so this is a relatively straightforward um, application, relatively straightforward proposal. It's a little different than maybe what some of the other zoning map amendments that council has seen in recent years, where we've got somebody maybe looking to do something in a property that's um, you know, maybe zoned appropriately, but the building on site or the property itself, um, you know, accommodates other types of uses. This is more, as I said, a corrective action um, to address what was, you know, a minor oversight uh, when the map was initially developed. Um, and with that all being said, uh, the Planning Commission recommended that City Council approve the request for the following reasons. The subject property is adjacent to and representative of residential properties to the south, uh, which are located in the residential medium density zoning district, meaning that uses permitted by the new zoning district would not be contrary to the character of the neighborhood and would includes the, include those which could otherwise be established in adjacent properties. Uh, the property appears to have been incorrectly zoned as industrial by previous city staff, an error propagated during the two thousand and fourteen review and adoption of the current zoning code and map. The property is and always has been residential, yet the current zoning designation will not permit such use by right. Uh, and finally, the applicant has provided evidence and testimony documenting that the current industrial zoning district adversely impacts the value and saleability of the property.
Thank you. So I just, I looked at the, that area, and is that the only unit that's uh, industrial, or there are other homes in that, on that street that are industrial as well that we need to fix?
Uh, well, so it, I believe the um, structure directly to the east, uh, which I believe is six forty-two, uh, Allrick Street, um, is also um, located in the industrial district. However, we usually want to wait to have a property owner uh, bring this to us, uh, because the owner of that property may choose to sell their property to somebody um, who is uh, proposing a use that is permitted by right in the industrial district. So they may want to combine it with the adjacent parcels just to the east there, or maybe they want to run an auto repair shop out of that, and they would like to, you know, or either they or a future property owner would like to do that, so they prefer to keep the industrial district. Um, so we don't want to um, necessarily speak uh, for the property owner um, in a case like this, and if they did come to us, we would um, of course, recommend support uh, for such a proposal, um, using the same justification as we are doing in this case. Um, but we do want that to be the decision of a current or a future property owner.
Um, so is this, is six forty-two a brick home, or is it a white center block looking building?
The property to the um, directly to the east is a two and a half story brick residence.
Okay. Um, have we ever done a rezoning for?
Pardon me?
Okay, because just looking at the geography, it's obvious to me that the GPS mapping like missed a little piece, and that's how it fell into this industrial zoning category. But if we could fix a problem for a bunch of people at once rather than piecemealing it, um, because I, I mean, like, I doubt someone wants a mechanic shop like right next, right next to them. So, um.
Well, I I mean, somewhat ironically, there is a mechanic shop.
Do you kind of understand what what I'm trying to communicate, and I'm not articulating it really well, but um.
Yeah, I I do kind of understand you're saying that.
Yeah, if we could solve a problem more broadly with this bill, I think we should.
Well, I guess what I would say to that is um, this was only a problem because the current property owner considered it a problem. If the owner of the adjacent property intends to live there for twenty years and they don't really care that their property is owned industrial, because they're going to continue living there as a legal nonconforming uh, use on site, that's fine. Uh, but again, if they did want to come to us, but I don't know that um, the city should necessarily be in the position to say, like, okay, we're gonna do an action that your neighbor's doing just because we think it makes sense. Uh, we we'd like to allow the property owner to come to us uh, with a proposal of that nature.
Yeah, but we're, we kind of have to be uniform and consistent, and we tend to, I mean, you know, the the spot zoning is always a little bit questionable. Um, I don't know, uh, could Lobby or give us a little bit more feedback on this, like between now and next Tuesday? Um, and is the applicant present and uh, and if they are, could you just give us a little bit of the issues that you're facing?
It it is my understanding, talking to the broker, the applicant may be infirmed, uh, and it's not actually in the house right now, uh, but cannot sell it, um, because it's it's zoned industrial. But let me say, you cannot vote on this next week. There's a whole series of requirements for public advertising. A public hearing has to be held. Um, the property has to be reposted. So on those things, and and our office is working with the clerk's office for uh, the schedule, we have got an extension agreement with the, on behalf of the property owner to be done by April thirtieth, I think, or April twenty-eighth. So um, we will, we will give So we will, we will give the council at least what the advertising requirements are. It's a special ad with more detail than usual. You did one of these two or three years ago, maybe? And Tears, I can speak to the details, I haven't been into the details. I will note, spot zoning is the government doing it as opposed to the property owner doing it. So the, the idea that we would pick something and say it should be this as opposed to an applicant who's allowed to make an application as a property owner, that is the difference with a spot zoning and the right to request a zoning map change for your property. If we were just picking properties out one by one for spot zoning, it would be a different issue. We could treat this whole thing as a correction and that would take a different evaluation. But that would, we are on a clock with the current application, so I don't know if we could do both at the same time. But Tears, I can speak to the advertisement.
Yes, the statute actually, I believe, Chapter 7, 303.15 requires initially that 30 days before the public hearing, there needs to be a posting on the perimeter of 640 Alrick Street as well as certified first class mailing sent to any other surrounding property owners. After that, there has to be a special posting two consecutive weeks. The first published, the first posting not being more than 30 days before, the last posting not being no less than seven days. So, like I said, we can work with you together. I assume we would work in collaboration with Mr. Knight for the postings. And we can assure that you can pick out a timeline that either works with your current sessions to have like a public meeting right before one of the sessions, or if you decided to just have a whole another public hearing, you know, whatever dates that you want to do, we can assure that your postings and your publishings fall in line with the chapter. And actually, I think, speaking to what Councilwoman Daniels says right now, that chapter actually requires that the property owner apply to, because, oh, and sorry, after this, the, after the public meeting, if the public meeting, if at that time, if the proposed amendment is changed in any way, you would then have to repost and have an additional public meeting. If not, you have 30 days to send the resolution over to Dolphin County. And then the actual zoning map gets amended, so.
Okay. So I'll open it up for questions. I'll start to my left, Councilwoman Davis.
Oh, thank you, Councilwoman Daniels. I don't have any questions, thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Green.
Thank you, I don't have any questions.
President Bowers?
I don't have any questions, I just look forward to working with the Law Bureau and Mr. Knight on a clear schedule moving forward. Thank you.
Councilwoman Rawls?
Thank you, I'm Councilwoman Daniels. Just a small question, because what Councilwoman Daniels was saying, I, I do partially agree with her, especially with not piecemealing it, but if there's other properties that are also in this industrial district, being able to put them in the medium, residential medium density portion of the zoning map. So I was wondering, when we do the public comments or the public engagement in the meetings, does the information say or ask other residents if you feel like you're in also this industrial district? Or if you are, if you would like to then be a part of the residential medium density district, or not district, but zoning? Does it allow them that chance to do that? I'm just, just a little clarification on what that?
I'm assuming the point of them, of us having to let the surrounding property owners know what's happening would then be a time for them to be able to come forward and say, you know what, I want to do that too.
That's what I was wondering, okay.
Or I don't, or why I don't want them to do it, you know what I mean? But so that is the point of the surrounding property owners being involved because it's their neighborhood. So at that time, I would think they would say, oh, well, this is a process I follow if I want to get that done as well.
Okay, that's what I needed clarification on. I thought and figured that was the reason, but I didn't want to assume because I also think, let's not piecemeal, if we can get more residents who would like to change their zoning, that would make complete sense instead of them coming back one at a time. So I'm, thank you for answering that question, that allows me to make a sound decision.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Daniels, sorry.
That's okay, thank you. Councilwoman Rodriguez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Jeff, for being here as always. What would qualify a, a home or someone requesting for the medium density zone? What, what would qualify that?
So, I mean, the, this property owner could have asked for perhaps any zoning designation, change it to downtown center if they wanted to. I think in that case, that's what I would consider spot zoning.
Is there specific like density or per capita that needs to be in the equation?
So our current zoning code only really has two uniquely residential, or specifically residential zoning districts, there's residential low density and residential medium density. We only have two sections of residential low density, Academy Manor up along northern Harrisburg and then Bellevue Park out in east Harrisburg. Everything else, whether you're, you know, kind of duplexes or row homes, is residential medium density. I think there was like a residential high density at one point in a previous version of the zoning code that got stripped out. So it just kind of flattened it all out.
It's like pretty standard.
RM district, yeah, so if you're almost any home, you're going to prob, and you are not RM and you want to be more conforming to what your property is, you would ask for an RM.
Okay, great. And then the amendment application, you had mentioned that the tenant was enabled at the time. Is this being done on behalf of like the property owner or realtor? So it's not the actual like tenant per se?
Oh, no, so the property owner has requested through the realtor, I think, to Mr. Grover's point. The property owner might be a little infirm, so I think the realtor's handling, handling a lot of this stuff for her. I, I think she has been included on some of the communications, she's aware of what's going on.
So the property owner is the one that put in the amendment application?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, this is not done on behalf of the property owner by the realtor.
And just for council's edification with that application, according to 7303.15, the zoning code amendment, subsection B would say, they would need to have the statement of why the change would be in the interest of the city, including conformance with the city's comprehensive planning and neighborhood plans. Two, a statement addressing any adverse effects on adjacent properties. Three, a statement addressing any major traffic access or congestion concerns. Four, a map showing the proposed boundaries of any proposed map changes, the existing zoning of the subject land and adjust, excuse me, adjacent lands and the current use of the adjacent lots. Five, completion of the zoning text amendment application or zoning map amendment application. And of course, six, the payment fees as set forth. And to the publications, public notice shall be published once a week for two consecutive weeks in a newspaper or general circulation. The first publication shall not be more than 30 days. And the second publication shall be less than seven days from the date of the hearing. For the zoning map amendments, public notice shall also include the posting of a sign at conspicuous locations along with the perimeter of the subject property at the first class mailing. Of the public notice shall be said, all current property owners who own parcels within the area propose to be rezoned at least 30 days prior to the hearing by City Council. And number four, if any public hearings held upon an amendment, the proposed amendment is changed substantially or revised to include the land previously not affected by it. The City Council shall hold another public hearing pursuant to public notice before proceedings to vote on the amendment. So just wanted to make sure they had the application in. And to council's point, we were following everything to statute.
Yes, and they presented to planning and were approved and also to Dolphin County as well with that application.
Perfect. Is there any way council can get a look at their application answers?
I believe that was included in the package.
That is in there?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Yep, perfect, if not, that would be great, thank you.
We can forward the package.
Awesome, thank you, no further questions.
Thank you, Councilman Jones?
No questions.
Thank you, so Jeff, I'll connect with you at some point and then President Bowers will coordinate scheduling.
Sounds good.
And that concludes the business of the Community and Economic Development Committee.
Thank you, thank you. We will now move forward with our meeting agenda. Next, we have public comment. Just a few housekeeping notes before we begin, please state your name and your address for the meeting record. If you don't feel comfortable sharing your address, please share the vicinity in which you live within the city. You have four minutes to share your comments. Mr. Parker will serve as our timekeeper, I'll begin to my right. Is there anyone that would like to offer a public comment? Seeing and hearing no one, anyone in the middle section? Okay? Seeing and hearing no one, anyone to my left? Seeing and hearing no one, the time is 6:50 PM. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, we stand adjourned.